I would like to call the September 1st Board of Education meeting together. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike, would you please read the COVID message for us, please?
My name is Mike Willamy, clerk of the board. This special public meeting of the Wichita Public Schools is taking place at the North High Lecture Hall, 1437 Rochester, Wichita, Kansas. Due to the governor's declaration of emergency and due to health and safety concerns that exist because of COVID-19, no members of the public are present at this meeting. This meeting is available to be viewed live by the public in the following ways: WPTV on Cox Cable Channel 20, the district's website at www.usd259.org/wptvonline, and livestream apps for phone, Roku, and Apple TV by searching WPS-TV. Following the conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available on the WPS YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPTV Cox Cable Channel 20. The agenda for tonight's meeting was published on August 27th at www.usd259.org/boe, under the BOE Meetings, Agendas and Minutes tab. The news media also received the main agenda and a portfolio containing the appendices. At this meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the meeting. The usual public communications item that allows members of the public to speak at board meetings has been removed from the agenda. In its place, an email public comment item has been added. Information about how patrons can submit email public comment is included on page one of the BOE agenda. Public communications will not be placed back in the agenda until the public again starts attending meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. First item.
Under Reports, Service Employees International, SEIU.
Welcome, Esau. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you all for having me, President Logan, board members. I just wanted to give you a quick update and let you know that everyone is getting more comfortable with things. I think things are starting to fall into place, and those who have found that they have restrictions are working towards, you know, rectifying or making those changes. Really, we're trying to be as patient as we can, and we're trying to be flexible and move with things as they're going. So I'm getting a lot of concerned phone calls, but I'm trying to keep everybody calm and moving forward. The only thing I've really heard from our members is there's a lot of emails going out, and if there's any way, and Dr. Thompson, I'm so sorry, I didn't even see you there at the beginning, so, hi, Dr. Thompson. And so basically, we wanted to make sure that just employees do have time during the day to check their emails, because as chaotic as it is, I'm hearing from a lot of our paraprofessionals and custodians and the likes, that there's just not enough time to actually do some of that stuff, so they want to make sure they can. So thank you for listening to us, and if you guys have any questions, I stand to answer, but we're good.
I'm seeing them, but we greatly appreciate how we're working together on this so that we can do the right thing for all of our employees. So thank you very much to you and your team. Next item.
Report, United Teachers of Wichita.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, and BOE members. Just a few items tonight. I feel like we've seen a lot of each other lately, so I'm going to keep it short tonight. Our teachers are working hard to be ready for our students next week. A concern that we're hearing about regarding prep time is access to their building after in-service and on weekends. This week is full of video in-services in the mornings and then building meetings in the afternoon, so many are requesting more time to prepare. Even in a normal year, we would be up there on weekends and evenings trying to get everything ready. Class sizes continue to be a concern we're hearing a lot about. We've encouraged teachers to be patient, as we know the numbers are changing daily. And as we get closer to our start date, we'll contact district administration with any extremes that we see. And we're still asking for some flexibility with teachers that have some hardship cases while teaching remote. We just ask that you give them the same grace and flexibility that you asked of the community back in the spring. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we certainly believe that we've got to work with our employees, so thank you. Next item.
Under Email Public Comment, we had nine persons provide emails, and those were shared with the board and will be included in the BOE minutes.
And we have all gotten those from you, and also, again, tonight's paper, and we will make certain that we have read them and that we include them in our minutes. Next item.
Consent Miscellaneous BOE Meeting Minutes for August 24, 2020.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Move to approve, Julie Hedrick, District 2.
I second it. Ernestine Crable, District 3.
Okay, it's been moved by Julie Hedrick and seconded by Ernestine Crable that we accept the minutes. Please cast your vote. Gosh, not quite ready. Now we're ready. Motion passes 7-0. Next item.
Under Operations, Future Ready Return to School Plan and a Report Regarding the Superintendent's COVID-19 Advisory Committee. On August 20, 2020, the Board of Education approved the Learning Model Decision-Making Outcomes and Decision-Making Criteria on pages 1 and 2 of Appendix 2. The Board also authorized Dr. Alicia Thompson to organize the Superintendent's COVID-19 Advisory Committee. The advisory committee would include Board of Education members, district leadership, district nurses, UTW teacher representation, SEIU representation, community leaders, health officials, parent representation, and physicians to meet on a regular basis to assist Superintendent Thompson and the Board in determining the most appropriate risk zone for school decisions. The role of the Community Advisory Committee is only advisory. On August 24, the Board approved two actions. One, that the COVID-19 Advisory Committee's immediate charge was to review gating criteria and provide any new information, including mental health information. And secondly, for the school activities portion of the restrictions, the five-week minimum requirement is waived. And two, the COVID-19 Advisory Committee review the school activities, gating criteria, and any new information available, and bring information back to Dr. Thompson about all extracurricular activities and sports being reinstated. The COVID-19 Advisory Committee and Board of Education would meet within the next week. On August 31, the Superintendent's COVID-19 Advisory Committee met to discuss community health data related to the COVID-19 pandemic, mental health issues of students, and student school activity information, including extracurricular activities and athletics. Tonight, Dr. Thompson will present the Board with information from the advisory committee. This item provides an opportunity for the Board's discussion and/or appropriate action.
And as a Board, I would ask that we would wait until the end of the presentation before asking questions, so please just note your questions so that you don't forget them, and we'll let Dr. Thompson go through her presentation. Also remember that Dr. Thompson is the Board's employee, so direct your questions, or if you want somebody else to speak, direct it to Dr. Thompson, and she'll make that decision. With that, welcome, Dr. Thompson. We're glad to have you here, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. To our President Cheryl Logan, Vice President Julie Hedrick, and the rest of the Board members, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to present to you this evening, and as I begin, I want to remind those who may be viewing tonight's meeting that the purpose of this special meeting is to review the Board of Education's plan as it relates to athletics and student activities. And I've received several questions about whether tonight's discussion will impact the learning mode that guides how we start school. And currently, as you know, we are on Level Orange, and the answer is that it does not change at this time. The decision will be reviewed at a later date, and no later than the end of the nine weeks, as we stated in prior meetings. We are eager to see our 6th and 9th graders on Friday for their virtual orientations, and we look forward to the start of our 150th Year of Public Education in Wichita on Tuesday, September the 8th. It is just around the corner, and we're getting excited. As a reminder, our 6th through 12th grade students will begin learning through My School Remote or Education Imagine Academy, and our pre-K through 5 students will be onsite in My School Remote or in Education Imagine Academy, based on parent selection. And the first day is always our favorite day, and we can't wait to get started. I want to talk about the Superintendent's COVID-19 Advisory Committee. The list you see on the screen is the distinguished group of individuals that I invited to serve on the advisory committee, and I think it's important to emphasize that the word is advisory. They did not vote on or make any final decisions, and the committee's work came to me in report form, and I've considered their feedback in developing the report to you this evening. I will share additional information on the committee's report in a few moments. As I mentioned in our last meeting, the members of this team have been drawn from the groups that have been advising since March. Terry Moses and Wendy Johnson served as the facilitators of my committee. You know, I thought a lot about how to create a group that is diverse in thought and in representation of the student body and our stakeholders, but at the same time, making it a manageable group in size so that we have the opportunity to have meaningful engagement. And I think we struck a strong balance with this distinguished group. As you know, Adrian Brine from the Cedric County Health Department and Dr. Paul Turan from the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids are both members of this committee. And you will see here in the data, these two members presented this information to our committee, representing the complex and ever-changing data presented by both Cedric County Health and Kansas Department of Health and Environment for COVID data in our county and our state. I would note that Cedric County data source is the COVID-19 Community Recovery reopen matrix among Cedric County residents, and that's the name of the report. It's a long mouthful, but that's the name of the report, and it was updated and posted on the county's website. For both Cedric County and KDHE, the data reflects on this chart is from the weeks of August 16th and August 23rd. And the key takeaway from this slide is that while the percentages have changed and we continue to improve ever so slightly in our county, the placement of data within your learning model decision guide matrix does not change from the previous discussions that you have had in the past. And as a crew team and as an advisory group, we will continue to monitor the data and identify placements on this matrix. We are so fortunate to have had Dr. Kelly Netson with the KU School of Medicine on our advisory committee. Dr. Netson is a neuropsychologist, a member of the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids, and perhaps the most important thing she is, is a parent and a proud member of the WPS family. The notes on the screen represent the highlights of the information that she shared with the advisory committee on yesterday, and I will draw your attention to two things. In bullet number three, the research shows that participation in activities has a direct impact on positive academic performance, especially for lower-income students. And in bullet four, you will note that sports and other non-sports activities, such as religious activities and extracurricular activities, are associated with better social and emotional outcomes. In short, sports and activities matter greatly for our kids. I'm going to try to work my way through this, because it's pretty complex, but I have my friend back here, Mr. Jay, in the event that he needs to correct me on the CAESIA update that he shared with the committee on yesterday. CAESIA's Board voted last Friday to allow individual districts to delay fall sports to the spring. The chart pictured here is what you have a copy of at your table in front of you. Districts may declare what they want to do for fall sports no later than September 21st. If 51% of all Kansas 5 and 6A schools, is what we have in our district, elect to delay fall sports, then spring sports for all 5 and 6A districts will push back the start date by nearly a month. If this delay occurred, then the spring sports schedule noted in the orange at the bottom of this handout that you guys have in front of you would be the schedule for all spring sports. A change of this nature would delay the end of spring sports to late into June. If less than half of the 5 and 6A districts choose to delay fall sports, the spring sports would continue as originally scheduled. Represented by the bottom schedule in the white part on your document, the individual's districts would overlap their delayed fall sports with the spring sports schedule. And perhaps one of the most significant consequences of this scenario, where a district is basically delaying fall sports on its own, is the fact that there would be no opportunity for championships in those delayed sports. How did I do, Jay?
You did very well.
All right. Based upon your charge to me, I immediately began wondering how we could create a solution that would basically allow us to meet the expectations of both of our strategic plan goal, which is number one, related to increasing the graduation rates and supporting academic achievements, as well as our goal number four, which is challenges us to ensure that schools are trusted as safe places. Those are our guiding principles, and I wanted to make sure that I tried to think through the lens of our strategic plan. And based on that thinking, I shared what you see on the screen with my committee to seek their feedback on the idea. You indicated that you did not want me to change your gating criteria, so in essence, this idea creates an addendum to your learning model decision-making guide that would allow for athletic and activities participation to varying degrees and upon certain conditions based on the level we're operating in. This idea matches participation mode with risk modes, as it has been identified by the National Federation of State High School Association, and that's just a national organization that CAESIA is part of. So let me give you a quick highlight before I share the committee feedback. Okay, so we're going to take a look at this document here that's on the screen, and you guys have it before you. For those activities that are identified as lower risk, which would include running events, sideline cheer, cross-country, or band, students would be allowed to participate in activities following appropriate WPS plan guidelines, as well as CAESIA's participation In the case of band, for example, because this is also an academic class and not an extracurricular activity, student participation would also be impacted by learning model status, which of course is impacted by the data that you've already reviewed. So football, on the other hand, which is a higher-risk sport, would participate in restricted mode. This means that for the duration of their season, student athletes would need to participate in learning via My School Remote, and would also need to continue in that mode for two weeks following the conclusion of their season. The other part of the concept presented was simply a representation of where the National Federation of State High School Athletics, or what we call the NFHS, places each sport based on risk assessment. Since we also had the question yesterday, I will point out that under low-risk activities, we do include other things besides athletics. Those are noted by the plus signs and are not ranked according to the risks that were given to us by NFHS, just so that we denote that they did not approve those. We just added that to this list. Now for the committee's feedback. We took a page from our strategic plan handbook and separated participants into four small groups, and they were social-distanced, and they had their masks on, and they were doing all the things that we need to be doing, and we created discussion groups. And we wanted to be sure that every voice was heard on the committee, and we asked members about the positives and the negatives of the concept that was proposed, and we asked them for additional thoughts and feedback. I want to highlight just some of them that the committee shared with me about some of the positive things that they thought about this concept that was presented. Some of the positives were that things were clear, that this was a clear compromise. It kind of got us in the middle. It showed willingness to listen. Another positive was focus on social and emotional support. Some of the participants felt that it was simple to understand, and it aligns with the Board of Education rubric. Some said it recognizes the importance of athletics and activities to the WPS students and families. Another positive is that ask students to choose My School Remote when in season in order to minimize potential disruption in the school. And another one was limits the potential for a building shutdown. So those were some of the positives, a few of the highlights of those. We used a similar process to collect the negative or the cons of the plan, and here are a few highlights of the negatives. It forces students to make a choice between activities or onsite learning while in season. Multiple-sport athletes may be online for a large portion of the year. If a school closes, would the entire season be compromised? They talked about health risks to participants and to their families. Another negative was seems to prioritize sports over academics.
Dr. Thompson?
Am I?
You have the wrong screen.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Spring is too late for the student athletes to pursue scholarships, and no ifs and whens for shutting down a team in the event of illnesses, and another one was no testing plan for the athletes. And I'll just kind of hold this screen here for just a minute for those who did not see that screen when I did it turn, so I'll leave it here for a moment. All right, and now I want you to take a look. You have a copy of my revised concept that includes the committee's suggestions. So they took the concept, and you gave me some feedback, and I incorporated some of that feedback. So the next four slides highlight this concept. Should you choose to adopt this concept, I would ask staff to add it to the Learning Model Decision-Making Guide that you approved, so it is clear and that it's available for all folks to see. You will note that the descriptor has changed from onsite to participate in order to assure The concept keeps in place the graduated levels of participation based on public health data that guides the level in which we operate. So it kept your matrix the same, and we just added in the athletics within the framework that you had already built. During the season of any sport or activity, and for two weeks following, the student would agree to participate in school via the My School Remote learning model if their sport falls into the restricted mode based on this chart. This is important because it allows us to accommodate your desire to protect the integrity of our buildings and the health and safety of our staff, students, and family as much as possible. Overcoming the concern that this concept prioritizes athletics over academics, I would suggest, as the second bullet indicates, that all student participants in athletics or activities will be required to achieve academic excellence in order to participate. Students would also have the opportunity for tutoring or other intervention strategies to help focus on their success, and we will be super-focused on health and personal hygiene strategies. I do think that it's important to note, as brought up by Kimber Cassett, our Director of Health Services, all athletes and coaches will need to adhere to the CAESIA COVID-19 Return to Participation Guidelines. These practices are currently in place, and we will continue to use them. We will continue to expect that all athletes who may be demonstrating symptoms of COVID-19, they should be tested. Additionally, the guidelines expect that if an athlete tests positive for COVID-19, they should be evaluated by a physician prior to the return to practice or competition. Also, I would emphasize a point that Dr. Netson shared. If we end up in the red zone, which means all activities would be remote, that does not mean that they are canceled. We know that coaches are oftentimes in a unique position with great influence over his or her players, and the expectations would be high for them to model positive reactions to whatever is decided, as well as facilitate productive discussions about handling disappointment and building resilience. Finally, you will see here how the NFHS risk classifications apply to CAESIA sports and activities. We also added additional non-sports activities based on the committee's questions, including JRLOTC, forensics, and debate. So I'll hold this here for a moment for all to see. We also asked the committee to provide any other feedback that they had a desire to share with me. I listened, and there are several things in this plan that have been adjusted based on their comments, and I'm going to read those. The proposed concept would eliminate spectators for regular season fall sports and encourage streaming slash online viewing. Coaches, mentors, and teachers will be encouraged to provide students with opportunities to connect and engage regardless of the learning model, and leveraging the positive connection that they have in our students' lives. Additional non-athletic activities added to the risk criteria for participation. Parents and student 18 years and older of age will be asked to sign waiver to acknowledge benefits and risk of participating in activities during COVID, and they did sign those already during the time when they were doing COVID. And they did sign those already during the time when they were doing the practicing and conditioning. Concept allows WPS to offer its students the same opportunities that area districts offer to their students. And of course, my favorite, mask-up. So I stand now before you to answer any questions that you have prior to considering whether you will take action based on the concept for discussion and appropriate action presented to you here this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Thompson, and we do have some questions. Mike?
Dr. Thompson, thank you, and the committee, they have put together a pretty comprehensive list of things, and it makes a lot of sense, and I'm glad to see that. And I'd like to make a motion, President Logan, that I move that we adopt the superintendent's proposed concept for athletics and activities that defines lower, moderate, and higher-risk activities that allows for full or restricted participation based on criteria included in the concept and that prohibits spectators in the audience at any regular-season fall sports. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ron Rosales, I second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mike Rode and a second by Ron. We do have some other speakers. Ben?
Yes, Ben Blankley, District One. I like this plan. I think it's a good compromise. I appreciate that it scales with our Learning Model Decision Guide and the community metrics that we've already put in place. When is the last date that a family can choose the in-person or MySchoolRemote option? Because say, for example, our nine weeks comes up, our community metrics are great, we go down to yellow, but these particular things would still have the requirement that a student be, have that choice, like pre-made in the enrollment system essentially? Do we know when that date is?
It's at the semester, and the semester is...
I don't see my academic people here. When's the semester? It's at the semester.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Yes, there it is. January the 22nd.
Okay. So would families that have secondary students right now and have athletes, would they, assuming this is passed, would they have to go in now to the enrollment system and pick MySchoolRemote even though all of our secondary students are currently in remote?
Well, right now, they wouldn't have to do anything because you all are all in remote. But if there was a change, then we would work with those families, the coaches and everything. We'd get them shifted to where they needed to be.
Okay, all right, all right. So I didn't want, you know, people to say, "Oh, no, I got to go enroll again."
Yeah, they don't need to do anything right now because they're all remote right now anyway.
Okay. I guess I wrote down, it reduces close contacts for all students if we have to do contact tracing, so that's a good plan. I like that. I did have three particular groups in spectators that I think we should consider adding. I know in general, right now, the recommendation is that we just, general public is not in attendance. They are all viewing remotely via livestream or whatever. I think we need to state that college recruiters, do they need to be? Is it important? I guess that's maybe a question for Jay or Dr. Thompson.
I think it's highly important that they are there if there are recruiters that want to come. We did not take that into consideration, even though we talked about scholarships at the meeting, but I guess I'm going to make an executive decision. I don't know, it's my, I guess it's my plan. Yes, I will allow, we would definitely allow recruiters to come, absolutely.
And they would still undergo the same temperature checks and mask requirement that any visitor to our district would currently have?
Yeah, and I would just make an assumption, and I would visit with my team, but they would know ahead of time if there were going to be recruiters coming, and we would just make the arrangements with the recruiters, what we would need them to do prior to entering into our stadium, which in any of our facilities, it's taking a temperature and going through the screening to say, you know, have you been sick? Have you been exposed to anyone? All those kinds of things. We would do all of that as folks enter into our spaces.
That makes sense. I guess the second thing is, so we would have all of the district's staff and students that are directly related to that athletic competition on the field or in the gym or that. Would we have to have a special carve-out for building and district admin, say, assistant soups, you know, I guess security's going to be there anyway, but, you know, would we have to have a special carve-out for, let's say, if you, Dr. Thompson, would like to go observe a basketball game, would we need a special carve-out in this? Because you are...
We definitely are going to have to have supervision. We would always have that, and I'm sure there's some folks that if someone gets injured, I think they're physical therapists or something. Some of those kind of folks are part of the athletic piece, and we would definitely allow those folks. Of course, we would want our athletic director to be there, and a lot of our principals are supervisory roles at the games as well. We also have people that take photos because we don't want to miss out on, you know, our kids taking, you know, photos or film that they need. So those pieces will be there, as well as if we go online, we're going to have to have announcers, and so people will be in our press boxes. So there will be folks there. It just would not be spectators to the game. It would be a reason that you would need to be at the game for some type of job of some sort.
Okay. I guess then my third piece of perhaps a general public spectator that might get special consideration is us seven board members, because we are not employees, we do not have badges that work on the readers. We typically get passes, but those are treated like general admission kind of things. And so I think that since we had so many individual student athletes reach out to us and tell us passionately, "Come see us play, come see us play," I think it's important that we kind of take the special position that we find ourselves in and give a tiny, tiny carve-out as us being members of the general public to say, "We should be able to go to these competitions in person." Unfortunately, the situation being as it is, general public is probably not preferable. You know, we would not want general public because, but we have badges, we're going to be on a list. If there was some sort of contact tracing that needed to happen, you know, it were fairly easy to contact, you know, 4,000 people plus in Wichita, know that now, so. Anyway, so I guess that's my third kind of question.
And what I would say is you would be considered essential visitors, and we would just allow that to be on our list to add of folks that would be able to be allowed to attend.
Yeah, I didn't want to, like, crack open entirely.
I think you're doing it.
Yeah, you know, keep adding people, but, you know, I do like the plan. I think it's important. It gets us to where we need to be. Oh, and I guess this has nothing to do with anything, but I just wanted to shout out to the, thank you to the school-based staff this week, as we're likely doing the largest digital-device distribution in Kansas history this week, so I was part of that today, so. But I guess on the topic at hand, that's all the questions I have.
Mike? Yeah, I hit your name accidentally. I was trying to put mine on. Oh, was it Ron? I beg your pardon, because I hit the wrong button when I was trying to add my name.
I think it was Ron.
Ron.
Thank you, thank you. Just going to go back to negatives. I just want to point out one thing that I think needs a little input, and on bullet point four says, "Seems to prioritize sports over academics." I just want to comment basically to everybody public that, you know, students are taught, you know, they're taught what they see in our society or by our parents and from staff and everybody else, but we are a supersaturated culture of sports. We created football, we created baseball, we created basketball. Just go up to KU, go up to Allen Fieldhouse, go down the first floor, and you'll see a magnificent history of basketball. So I don't blame the students for really loving what they have passion for, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that they're reflecting what we teach them. Okay? If we teach them to love sports, they're going to love sports. So in a way, I can understand why some people get upset about that, but at the same time, it's not their fault. They are the children of people who love and have a passion for whatever it is they're involved in. So just wanted to make sure that that negative, in my opinion, really isn't a negative. It's a societal thing that we got going on, and I'm guilty of it. When I'm watching my sports, they know, my children know, don't bother dad or enjoy the sport, one of the two. So that's just, you know, my take on that. The other thing is, going back to what Ben was talking about as far as spectators, I'm not expecting this to be done right now, but it's something that, when he was talking, that might be brought up later with the committee or somebody, maybe Dr. Thompson and your leadership team. If we could maybe just give the student participating two tickets and say, "Here's two tickets for, you know, two people to come in, they can write their name on or whatever." But anyway, that's just an idea for allowing spectators. And please don't take this wrong, but there's some student sports that there's not a lot of spectators anyway. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. If we could open it up, then maybe that's an option just to do. Thank you.
And I will discuss with team. Thank you.
Sure.
Ernestine?
I'm uncomfortable with any of this, opening it up just a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more. It seems to me that either we deal with the fact that the whole community is confronting a pandemic in the whole United States and the whole world, and that it is inconvenient to not be able to go to sports, for example, and it is inconvenient, and that families and staff members and teachers and coaches and all of those and their families are also at risk for being involved with this. I'm really uncomfortable, and I'm uncomfortable with the idea that somehow or another, the school board ought to have a special dispensation for this, because COVID doesn't care that you got elected by, you know, huge majority. I just am real uncomfortable with this saying, "Well, these people would like to..." After all, we are going to talk about having the screen, I mean, the video of it, and it seems to me if we do have any kind of sports, and I'm not yet at the place that I'm really ready, but if we do have any, it's because we're caring about the kids and because we're letting the kids have the activities and because we're saying, "Okay, this is not as risky as something else might be." And that therefore, if it's not as risky for the kids to play, let's stop there and not expand it beyond and say, "Well, what about the board members? What about the somebody else, and what about the somebody else?" I do understand that there are people, and basically what I'd like to say is, let's say, let Jay have the authority to make a special visitors badge for a recruiter or somebody that is, has a need to be there that is not on the normal staff. But in general, I don't think the idea of having, well, just a couple more and a couple more. I think either we're saying that there's a COVID risk in this community, and we're trying to protect our children, and we are quite frankly trying to protect the families, and we're trying to protect the staff members. We have 7,000 employees in this district, and it wouldn't take very much for some of this to begin to filter into the community and such. I want to ask, now, it's not on this, but I want to know how we would go about, say, having the high-risk sports such as football in the spring. This doesn't say it one way or the other, but I would be less likely to vote for this if it meant that we were going to do those high-risk sports now. I might be persuadable if we could say that we're not going to do the high-risk sports until the spring, because I really think that, and I think we're going to see a surprise, no, it's not a surprise, after Labor Day, we're going to see it jump up again. I also have had parents that have written to me and said they've been to restaurants or they've seen people at Walmart without masks, and they're saying, "Why can't you let our kids..." I want to say, just because there's other people that are being stupid about the masks doesn't mean that we should be incautious about taking care of what our responsibility is for the kids. And so I want to have the idea of when we would do the high-risk sports before I would vote on this as a package, because it doesn't seem to me that it identifies that.
And I guess I'm going to go back. Are you talking about the update from CASIA? On slide, I believe, five?
Yeah, about the spring, yeah, yeah, the spring and the, yeah. I would like to see us make a decision about high-risk before I vote on this, but I know that that's, it's like, which comes first, the chicken or the egg, and it's, but...
Yeah, Ernestine, this is Ben Blankley. I don't think CASIA split out the individual sports. I think it was, you either have a fall season or the whole season is shifted to the spring.
Is that true? Jay, is that true, that we can't have some sports now and like all of these low-risk?
It says, "Spring sports, fall sports." It says, "Full fall/spring seasons would overlap beginning March 1st if individual district delayed fall sports to spring season."
Well, see, I could see this for some of the low-risk and medium-risk sports, but I really can't see jumping right into the high-risk sports in this first nine weeks when we don't know if things are going to go down. Do we have to have it all or nothing?
The concept that I brought forth is, did not take into consideration the update from CASIA. I was, I brought forth a concept that was bringing back the athletics and the activities.
Now, see, I can see very much that the activities that are low-risk and even the medium risks, as they take the proper precautions, could indeed, we could, if they take the remote learning option, could be done. But to me, saying that for the high risk, that's where I'm questioning. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. I, would you please pull up the slide that has the low-risk, moderate-risk, and high-risk, and then the green, yellow, orange, and red? And I'm sorry, I don't know the slide number because it's not marked on this.
Are you talking?
When you hit it, I'll say it. There you go.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
I think what you're proposing, and I just want to make sure we're all clear what we're about to vote on, is you're saying that students, no matter where they are in orange, yellow, or green, their activity at this time with restrictions and with them taking responsibility and signing a waiver and staying out in MySchoolRemote for the season plus two weeks, which is the quarantine in case they caught something at the last game, that we are allowing low, medium, high-risk students to participate?
That is correct.
Okay, and for example, right now, we are in orange.
That is correct.
So right now, the only sports that, and activities, because this will include all of our activities in our schools as well as our sports, the only ones that could participate with no restrictions is the low-risk.
That is correct.
So the other two, the moderate and the high-risk, would have restrictions if we move to yellow, soon we hope, then the low-risk and moderate-risk, which means once we come back to onsite learning, they could come back to onsite learning too in those two categories. Is that correct? And then the high-risk would still be restricted, still have to stay out on MySchoolRemote, still have to quarantine for two weeks.
That is correct.
Then in the green, hopefully we get to green, everybody can... Then in the green, hopefully we get to green, we, everybody can participate as they always have with no restrictions, can be onsite, can not have to quarantine, all those kinds of things. Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
Summarization?
That is correct. That's the concept that we're bringing forth.
Okay. And, and I think we've had several things kind of put out tonight. This is a compromise because we hear our students, our parents, our, our, even our medical community telling us how important sports and activities are for students' mental and, and social wellbeing. And we will, as much as we absolutely possibly can, have videotape going on and/or live streaming on YouTube or somewhere of these sports so that if a parent can't come, which right now we're saying no visitors unless it's truly somebody that's coming to give scholarships or, or you're there to work like our referees and those kinds of things at these, at these events. So we, we are, I, I am a little bit like Ernestine in that I really don't want to make exception to that right now. We're kind of, we're in the iffy stage of orange. We'll see what happens after Labor Day. Hopefully we will stay in orange. Hopefully we'll go down to yellow. And, and we have a committee, your committee, not ours, your committee established to be able to look at that and track it and bring information back to us two weeks after we get past Labor Day or three weeks or whenever you decide that you need to call that committee. With that said, I can support this plan. I think it's the, it is a compromise. I don't think any of us are 100% happy, but you know what? I think it's a good plan to get our kids back into those important activities and sports. I would not support changing the no spectators right now with a very limited exception to that, including not adding board members because, yes, I hear from a lot of people, but I don't think I'm better than a parent that has a child playing. So I, I wouldn't support that. Obviously, the devil is in the details. We have lots of questions about, you know, who can, can cheerleaders come to these games, that kind of thing. I think that we have to leave to the superintendent and your team to make those decisions because you're the closest to the, to the call and let's see what we can do. With that said, I can support this plan. Ron?
It's, I think it's Mike again.
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to get something clear, President Logan. Whenever we refer to the committee, so if, in other words, like if, say, we wanted to have spectators, does that have to go through the committee or for, just not even for activities, just for general things like, you know, are, are they going to be the ones that give us some recommendations as far as actually opening up schools the next nine weeks?
Well, I think that's the superintendent's call.
Okay, all right.
Because she's going to be able to make that decision of what do I need to run by the committee so that I can get more information to bring back to the board. Because she's, that's her information gathering and expertise people.
Okay.
And then if she decides she needs that, and if not, I mean, we have another meeting September the 14th, we'll have some discussions about whatever at that point.
Okay. I have this, you know, emails, people, they were confused as far as exactly what the committee does. So it's just not, this committee has just not given us recommendations just for this that we can, we can use them for, to look into other items?
No, I'm not using them for recommendations. I'm using them to help guide me.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's.
They're guiding me as a non, you know, I don't, I don't have any medical backgrounds or anything of that nature. So I just need some people to give me information and process ideas with me that I can bring back to you.
Okay. So the process would be to ask Dr. Thompson to charge the committee to have something looked into, to advise you or just kind of give you information?
Go ahead. If you have something, I may not need to, I mean, it depends on what you're asking me to look at. I mean, there, there are things that I can, in my purview, that I can make decisions about that I don't need to have an advisory committee to do.
Okay.
But if there are some things that I feel as it relates to the guide, because that's really what the charge of that group really is, is to make, to help me to look at this guide.
Okay.
You know, that matrix that you all have approved and to help me to look at that matrix. And if there's anything that needs to shift in it when, as they're looking with me, then I would bring those back and say, hey, we were looking at this and it looks as if we're, you know, the numbers are going in the wrong direction or the right direction and I needed to bring this before the board. So it's not a special, it's not a whole bunch of, just a whole bunch of meetings just to solve problems. It's really to be looking at this particular matrix. That was the charge of the group. And if there's information or things that caused me to need to make some adjustments to something, then I would come back and say, we looked at this information, you better look at it, board members, and see what you want to do with it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Julie?
I, I just want to make a comment about academics and athletes. And I like in your plan that the athletes will achieve all the grading and attendance expectations for students particip, for student participants. And I also like that students will participate in academic tutoring or other intervention stat, strategies as may be recommended for academic success. And I think if we allow athletics, that they're going to get those pieces, whereas if we don't allow athletics, the academics could suffer. So I, I like that piece. I do also though want clarification before we vote where we're final, where we're falling on spectators because that's also important to me that if we're going to allow the high-risk athletics, I, then I'd like to balance the scale in our community by not having spectators at activities. So I'd just like a clarification from you before we vote because there's been a lot of different conversation here. I'd just like to know where that's falling out before we vote.
I'm going to go with what I know how to do. The Roberts Rule of Order, there is a motion on the floor and a second, and in his motion, if you don't make an amendment to that, you're going to stick with what he said, which was no spectators because that was what was in the original motion and seconded by Ron.
Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
Okay.
Could you have Mike read the?
Yes. Mike, would you read the motion one more time? Please?
Yes. My motion is, is that we adopt the superintendent's proposed concept for athletics and activities that define lower and moderate, that define lower, moderate and high-risk activities that allow for full or restricted participation based on criteria included in the concept and prohibit spectators in the audience at any regular season fall sports.
Okay. Ernestine?
What is referred to, what would be restricted on, because I noticed that on some of the high-risk activities, it still would say allow them, but with restriction. It's not like that they're eliminated for the fall, but they would be allowed with restriction. What does that mean or restricted?
Okay.
And either the yellow or the orange.
Okay. Well, let's just stick with football.
Okay.
So football, if you are in orange or yellow, you would be restricted, which means that you would enroll in my school remote.
Right.
And so during the time that the season is going on, you wouldn't be in my school remote. Well, it's right now, they're already in remote learning. So really, they would just continue down what they're doing. They would, they would go ahead and play and compete with all of the Kasia guidelines and health, hygiene, all of the things that they've been doing, all this time that they've been practicing and conditioning. They've already been following those guidelines that were put forth. We're saying that if you, if you're not feeling well, we use those screening things, you will definitely need to not be coming to practice and participating if you're, if you have any symptoms as it relates to COVID-19. If you have been tested for COVID-19 and you have COVID-19, we would also tell you not to come pla, practice or compete. So we have all these rules. They wear masks. They do, if you look, when they were practicing, you would see them standing on the sideline, but they would be spread out more on the sideline. So there's lots of different mitigation strategies that the, that the athletes use that is given to them by Kasia. So they are following all of the guidelines, the health and hygiene guidelines that are given to them by Kasia. And they've been doing that all summer long as they've been practicing and also conditioning.
They've been practicing and conditioning, but when we begin to have, have games.
Yes, ma'am.
That's going to be some pretty personal up close and.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I want to find a way to vote for this, but, but really, I would like to have the high-risk sports be put off to the spring and not the rest of the stuff. And I don't want to have it all in one category. It's lumped, it's either all or nothing. I'd like to have the high-risk sports put off to be a spring thing.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor right now.
Can I amend it?
No. You, you can if Mike's willing to accept that amendment, but.
He's not going to accept my amendment.
Well, we have to vote on that motion first and then.
No, not, no, we don't have to vote on that motion if we're going to amend it.
That's what I said. He has to accept it. You want to ask?
I would listen to your amendment, yes.
I'm sorry, what did he say?
I would listen to your amendment.
It's, it's basically that the high-risk sports be posted for a springtime season. The others be, be just like it is. That's not a part of the, you know, I'm accepting the rest of your motion, except that the high-risk sports, I think, should be put to the spring.
I, I cannot do that. I'd have to stay with my written proposal.
Okay. There is one more thing, Dr. Thompson, that, that would happen with these high-risk sports that's in our PowerPoint. In fact, it's up on the screen. Well, it was. Is that they are out my school remote for their season, but they're also out an additional two weeks, 14 days, after their season so that we can guarantee that they didn't contact something the last game that they played and then come immediately back into our building. So they have to commit to being out my school remote for their season plus two weeks. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear because that's the, that's kind of the change of just being my school remote for a season, but we've really got a 14-day quarantine because they'll still be out on my school remote.
And I'm going to do this and I probably shouldn't, but my school remote, the nine weeks is over November the 6th. The football season, and yell at me, Jay, if I get it wrong, is over with like October 25th, 26th, somewhere around in there, okay? Unless you're going to sub-state or you're going to a championship game or a state game of some sort. So really, you're kind of in that nine-week period, it kind of fell, kind of, just kind of just right. Again, but you still got it, when that season's over with that, on that 20, you still got to do two weeks, so it's just right there teeter tottering at the end of that nine-week period.
Okay. And, and right now, that's not a huge issue because everybody's out on my school remote.
That is correct.
But if our level changes, we may be bringing kids back in onsite. We want to do that as quickly as we can. Okay. Ben?
I just, the, anyway, the competitions that we would be scheduling, I know it was floated originally a couple of weeks ago that we would only be doing city league. So us and the parochial, the two parochial high schools, would we still operate in that for all of these, these scheduling kind of things?
Now you're out of my league. So I am going to ask Jay to come and support me in this.
Jay means district athletic director. Ben, that was the original plan, but when the board voted not to have athletics, at that point in time, Bishop Carroll and Capen moved on. You know, they were in with us, but at that point, then they had to do what they had to do. So they've pretty much filled the schedule. So now I have built a schedule for just the seven 259 schools for every sport and, and we would stick with that with no other outside competition during the regular season.
Okay. Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor and I am not seeing any more speakers, so I'm going to call the question. Does anyone want the motion read again so that you know what you're voting on? Okay, I don't see that, so let's, the motion was bade by Mike and seconded by Ron. Please cast your votes. Motion passes 6-1 with Ernestine Crable voting no. Thank you very much. Next item, Mike.
Adfirmant.
Ben Blankley, District 1. I move we adjourn.
Wait, Dr. Thompson has one thing that we want to do before we adjourn.
I take back my motion.
I'm going to try to bring some normacy in here because we, we normally, when we get ready to start school, we celebrate and we're going to go, we're going to, we're going to keep our tradition. So I want to share that the first day of school this week is, is, is a week from today, is a week from today. We start on September the 8th and, you know, we're really having a great, I mean, honestly, this year is, we're celebrating 150 years of educating students. And man, this is going to be an exciting year. We got a lot of things that are going to be different, but what a way to kick, kick off our 150th year of educating students. And I just want to talk to the students a little bit and tell them that we missed you. We have missed you so much and we are excited to have you back. And whether you're going to be joining us in person or whether you're joining your teachers and your classmates, classmates at onsite, we are just looking forward to it. And our students, teachers and parents, it's okay to be nervous as we start. We're nervous too. We are in unprecedented, unprecedented times and we are learning alongside of you. And I want to talk to our teachers. Our teachers and our staff, they are so amazing and I just want to give them a shout out. You know, our teachers have gone through many hours of training on new technology, getting ready for our students, and they're trying new things this year to give students an incredible learning opportunity. And teachers, we see you. We see you doing everything that you can so that you can be prepared to school and you are amazing and I am just WPS proud of all of you. And I also want to tell you this, you don't have to be perfect, guys. You don't have to be perfect on the first day. We will have hiccups and that's okay. We will work through them the first few days and we will have an amazing year. I want to give a thank you out to our IST folks for all of the work that they are doing this week to deploy the thousands of devices to help our students learn from home. I am so stoked about that. It is amazing, all of the things that they've been doing to get our families set up and ready for next week. I also am going to give a shout out to all of our support staff, our custodial staff, I mean, clerical staff. You guys have been tremendous in helping us to be able to get ready for our kids. And parents, we know that there will be some technology glitches as students embark on this new online adventure and it's okay. We've been spending the first week getting familiar with our technology. We've been building relationships, trying to connect, and I will tell you, this is one of the biggest rollout of technology probably that this state has ever seen, to have that many units and that much technology going on all at the same time. So we're going to spend a couple of days with some hiccups. That's just normal when you get ready to open up something that big. But we've tested things, we've worked on things and our team has, is, are amazing, but there's going to be some issues probably, maybe, maybe not, but I just want us to be prepared in case there are. But I don't want us to get all worked up and upset because we're in this together. We're going to have some grace, we're going to be flexible and we're going to show each other some compassion as we're moving through this first week. Just give it a week, it'll get better as we move on, but just give it a week, parents and students and staff, and, and we'll be able to move through this together. So I would also just go ahead and say that if you are having technology issues, you can call our HEPL line at 973-4357, which is 973 HELP, 973 HELP. As we've said all along.
As we've said all along, please remember to practice patience, flexibility and grace. And we've never done this before and we're all in this together. So, let's take care of each other and build each other up. And a positive attitude can make a big difference in the success of our students and we will all have a fantastic year and I am stoked. So, we will see you on September the 8th. I'll be on my school remote classrooms and I will be in person as well. And we will not overwhelm the schools, of course, but we will definitely be looking and supporting our ste, teachers and our students on our first day. So, thank you very much for allowing me this time.
You're very welcome and none of us could have said it better. We're excited about the new school year. Ernestine?
I'd like for us to give a hand clap to all these teachers that are trying to learn everything from 150 years' worth of school development in a month. And to all of the staff that's out there getting it clean, to all of the, all the custodians and.
And the technology people.
Technology people and the.
This has been, this has been a work of love and we want to keep kids learning and that's the most important thing we do.
And I'm just going to do it again and I'm going to keep doing it. Rob, would you raise, wave, please? This, this, this young man, I'm going to call him a young man, probably doesn't sleep ever. We've got to give him a break at some point, but I don't know when. He tried to lay down on me last night on social media and I told him he had to get back up. But he has done, he has come into this district and he's done a yeoman's job of being able to take us from 100 to 150 in a matter of a few, few months. So, kudos to you and thank you for being part of the WPS family.
Okay, with that, Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Ron Rosales, District 6, I second.
Thank you. I thought we were going to have to sit here all night. So, it was moved by Ben and seconded by Ron that we adjourn the meeting. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.